Ladies and gentlemen, the special session for the 53rd National Convention of Company Secretaries shall begin shortly. The session shall be graced by our chief guest, Honorable Governor Kerala, Sri Rajendra Vishwanathan Arleka. Request all the delegates to kindly remain seated. We also urge the participants to kindly keep your mobile phones on silent mode for an uninterrupted program. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, our chief guest for the 53rd National Convention of Company Secretaries, Honorable Governor of Kerala, Sri Rajendra Vishwanathan Arleka, has already reached the convention venue and is expected to walk in any moment right now. We request all the delegates to kindly remain seated. Once again requesting all the delegates to kindly enter the venue and please remain seated. The entry and exit doors are about to be closed.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are all set to begin the special session. Request you all to be kindly seated. Ladies and gentlemen, we are delighted to announce the arrival of our chief guest, a distinguished statesman and a devoted public servant, a fearless transformer and an able administrator, Sri Rajendra Vishwanath Arleka. Let's have a big round of applause for Sri Rajendra Vishwanath Arleka, chief guest of the 53rd National Convention of Company Secretaries.
Accompanying our chief guest is President of ICSI, he is Dananjay Shukla, CS Pavanji Chandak, Vice President ICSI. I would also request CS Dwarkna Chenur, Program Director and Council Member ICSI, and CS Ashish Mohan Secretary to please join them on the dais. The dais is now graced by the presence of our esteemed chief guest. We are now all set to begin the session. May I now request all of you to kindly rise for the National Anthem.
Once again, a very warm welcome to all. Ladies and gentlemen, Honorable Prime Minister of India, Sri Narendra Modi ji recently expressed that "India's progress is built on self-reliance, innovation and citizen empowerment." Aligning with the vision of Bharat tomorrow, let us work together across nations and sectors to create a sustainable future for all. We welcome you all, specifically acknowledging the virtual gathering across the globe, to the special session of the 53rd National Convention of Company Secretaries in the beautiful port city of Kochi with the theme "Progressive, Inclusive and Sustainable Bharat."
I would now request CS Dananjay Shukla, President ICSI, to kindly felicitate our honorable governor with a planter, ponnada and a memento, symbolizing our heartfelt respect, gratitude and a gesture of sustainable honour. Thank you sir for accepting this small token of our appreciation. Your presence here today is truly an honour and we are grateful for the opportunity to felicitate you.
Thank you sir. In the journey of more than five decades, the profession of company secretaries has achieved highest milestones and made a mark in the corporate sector as an epitome in promoting good corporate governance. Today, each company secretary is a phase of good governance and an ambassador of the profession. Fostering knowledge, exchange, sparking innovation and building meaningful professional connections, the voyage of National Convention of Company Secretaries continues, carrying forward its legacy of learning and collaboration. With this background, may I request CS Dwarkna Chenur, Program Director and Council Member ICSI, to deliver his address.
Good evening, Honorable Governor of Kerala, Sri Rajendra Vishwanath Arleka, Chief Guest on this occasion, CS Dananjay Shukla, President ICSI, CS Pavanji Chandak, Vice President ICSI, CS Ashish Mohan, Secretary ICSI, Dignitaries on the and of the dais, distinguished guests, professionals, students, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening and a warm welcome to all of you. At the outset, I extend respectful greetings to Sri Rajendra Vishwanath Arleka. At the outset, I extend respectful greetings to Sri Rajendra Vishwanath Arlekar ji, the Honorable Governor of Kerala, for gracing this occasion as the chief guest. Sir, your presence lends this gathering great inspiration and enriches this occasion. Sir, we eagerly look forward to your inspiring words for the profession of company secretaries. We at the Institute of Company Secretaries of India are honoured and delighted to host the 53rd National Convention of Company Secretaries at this historic city Kochi. Kochi renowned for its breathtaking natural landscapes, rich cultural legacy and dynamic role as a centre of trade and commerce offers a truly fitting backdrop for this prestigious national event. We are proud to mention that for the first time, the National Convention is being organized in Kochi. Kerala's leadership in clean energy adoption, public spirit development makes this city an ideal location for hosting this event. The state is an example who can learn from. Friends, today, the ICSI stands as a symbol of excellence not just within its borders but on the global stage. Our members and students are recognized worldwide for their expertise and commitment to uploading the highest standards of corporate governance. This recognition reflects the dedication and the hard work that the ICSI community invests in shaping the future of corporate India. In this, in the corporate sector, the demand for CS professionals continues to rise. We are the bridge between law and leadership, ensuring that organizations not only meet their legal obligations but also uphold the highest standards of integrity and accountability. The world is appreciating the multifaceted skills and sharp intellect that define a company secretary. Our training equips us with a unique blend of legal acumen, financial understanding and strategic thinking, a potent combination that extends far beyond traditional boundaries of our governance role. We have gathered here to connect, learn and explore new paths for our profession with an aim to actively contribute towards the vision of Viksit Bharat. Friends, to quote the Honorable Prime Minister of India, people power must be combined with good governance to bring about real, deep and lasting change. This combination can achieve almost everything from eliminating corruption to ending malnutrition and illiteracy. The theme "Progressive, Inclusive, Sustainable Bharat" calls for growth with integrity, opportunity that reaches everyone and a development that cares for people and the planet. Kerala's spirit of clean energy, green infrastructure and vibrant startup gives a living example of what that future can look like. Sir, your presence inspires our fraternity to raise its sights towards a Bharat that is confident, compassionate and future-ready. On behalf of ICSI, we thank you for joining us and look forward to your valuable thoughts and words of wisdom. As we look ahead, we envision a future where company secretaries play an even more significant role in shaping India's economic landscape. We aspire to be catalysts of positive change, promoters of transparency and advocates of responsible business practices. With gratitude, I a warm welcome to Honorable Governor of Kerala and to all of, all of you, let us learn, connect and build a brighter future. Thank you very much.
Thank you sir for that warm and gracious welcome. I now request CS Pavanji Chandak, Vice President ICSI, to deliver his address.
Good evening. Good evening. Chief Guest of the day, respected Sri Rajendra Vishwanath Arlekar, Honorable Government of Kerala. Sir, tumse swagata hai Kerala madhe. CS Dananjay Shukla, President ICSI, CS Dwarkhanath Chenur, Program Director and Council Member ICSI. My central council colleagues sitting in this hall. Past former presidents, former secretaries, current secretary CS Ashish Mohan ji, past and sitting regional council members, past and sitting chapter managing committee members, distinguished invitees, eminent guests, ladies and gentlemen. It is indeed a great honour and privilege to extend a very warm welcome to respect, of respect to all of you with deeply, we are already deeply honoured by the gracious presence of Chief Guest, Sri Rajendra Vishwanath Arlekar sir, Honorable Governor of Kerala. Sir, your life and leadership epitomize the ideas and values that define the vision of future-ready India sir. Kerala as a state is unique in many ways. Kerala achieved total literacy almost two decades back when all other states were struggling even for majority of the people literacy. Incidentally, Kerala is the only state with hospital facilities in every village. Kerala also enjoys the highest communication infrastructure in the country. The state's startup ecosystem is experiencing a remarkable transformation with a reported 20% annual growth. It is a whopping growth rate of 167% surge in ecosystem value in entire year, the only year that is 2025. Kerala has long upheld the belief that progress must embrace the inclusivity. Its milestone in literacy, healthcare and social advancement stand as a proof that development without equality remains incomplete. Similarly, a company may report profits but without a commitment to inclusivity, transparency and sustainability, true success remains elusive. Friends, we all know, good corporate governance is essential for fostering transparency, accountability and trust within an organization, ensuring so that it operates ethically and morally. The ICSI actively supports this by equipping CS professionals with necessary expertise to meet this objective of the prosperity and ethical governance. ICSI plays a significant role in strengthening the standards of governance across the corporate sector in India. Company secretaries plays a crucial role in progression of the corporate sector. Apart from ensuring good corporate governance, CS are handling roles and responsibilities in various areas. In this journey towards a Viksit Bharat, sir, the CS will be instrumental in driving sustainable corporate growth by promoting good corporate governance, fostering transparency and advancing economic reforms. Sir, this 53rd National Convention makes marks a celebration of relentless dedication, perseverance and professionalism that company secretary bring to the forefront of our nation's development. This distinguished assembly of experts reflects the vital role the company secretary professionals play in shaping India's corporate and economic framework. Bharat today stands at the cusp of one of the most defining transformations in the history. As Honorable Prime Minister Sri Narendra Modi has so powerfully said, this is not merely an era of reform but an era of transformation. Many a times we also see, yeh deesh ke liye marne ka nahi, deesh ke liye jine ka wakt hai. An era where Bharat is not just participating in global progress but leading with conviction, with culture and with conscience. We move towards 2047, the landscape of leadership and decision-making will be marked by a blend of technological integration, stakeholders inclusion and the focus on sustainability. Emerging technologies like artificial intelligence, blockchain and quantum computing will disturb the traditional models, creating new opportunities along with challenges. But professionals across industry like company secretaries need to adapt to the evolving outlook to become a proactive leader in various areas including ethical governance and digital evolution. Emerging areas like ADR, ESG, social audit, MSMEs and startups, artificial intelligence and digital transformation are opening up for our professionals which clearly reflects the trust reposed in us by all the government and government department and the stakeholders. The expectations of the government and regulators are very much and we are required to give the commitments in terms of demonstrating the high levels of standards that can be harnessed only from immense investment in self-development, training and good corporate practices. I take immense pleasure and pride in sharing that ICSI is aligned deeply with the vision of Viksit Bharat. Though major, through major reforms, in syllabus and training, ICSI is providing advanced facilities to its students and also members and ICSI is in process of implementation of AI and automation in its processes to provide value-added services to all the stakeholders. On members' front, the ICSI has initiated capacity building measures in the form of capacity building series on various diversified topics. Several PMQ courses has been launched, looking at the various new avenues for company secretaries, which includes the crash and certificate courses along with PMQ courses and are offered for the skill enhancement of the members in emerging business areas and corporate areas. In an era defined by progressive reforms and a heightened focus on sustainability, the role of professionals, especially company secretaries, become highly significant and we stand as a vital ring between the policy and people, governance and growth, corporate intent and national intent. Swami Vivekanand has once said, every book has got to pass through hundreds of difficulties before succeeding and every work also has to pass through the hundreds of difficulty before succeeding and those that preserve us will be the light sooner than the latter. So with the spirit of responsibility and resolve, I once again extend my heartfelt gratitude to Honorable Governor sir for his gracious presence today at, as a chief guest. Together, let us affirm our commitment to shaping Bharat that is progressive in vision, inclusive in growth and sustainable in legacy. Thank you, Jai Hind, Jai ICSI.
Thank you. Thank you Vice President ICSI for your profound and gracious welcome. Your words have truly set the stage for a memorable gathering. Ladies and gentlemen, the gathering here at the convention and those attending virtually are the testimony of the strength of the profession and the spirit with which the profession is carrying forward the legacy of promoting governance, culture to elaborate on the scene. I request now, CS Danjay Shukla, President ICSI, to deliver his presidential address, sir.
Kerala ke yashshvi rajyal pal mahodar, shriman bahamayim rajendra vishwanath arlekar ji, kushal shankhithan kartaa, deesh ke vikas me ek bahut badi bhoomkaa nevane vale, our chief guest Sri Rajendra Vishwanath Arlekar ji, Honorable Governor of Kerala. CS Pavanji Chandak, Vice President ICSI, CS Dwarkhanath Chenur ji, Program Director and Council Member ICSI, my worthy fellow council colleagues, CS Manish Gupta, former president, Mr. Bina Simhan, immediate former president, former president, president here, former secretary, CS Ashish Mohan Dhartiputra, Secretary ICSI, CS Madhusudhanan Epi Chairman S I R C, CS Genu Mathan Chairperson Kochi Chapter, all the distinguished delegates and distinguished speakers, Sri Praveen Trivedi ji, Executive Director I F S C A, all the distinguished speakers, former and present regional council members, present and former chapter managing committee members, eminent guest on and on and of the dais, a very good afternoon to all of you. It gives me an immense pleasure to welcome you sir to this special session of 53rd National Convention of Company Secretaries. It is indeed a moment of great honour and privilege to have amidst Sri Rajendra Vishwanath Arlekar ji, Honorable Governor of Kerala, Chief Guest of the day. Sir, your gracious presence today adds immense value inspiration to this August gathering. May I request all of you to put your hands together to give a big round of applause and welcome our chief guest, Sri Rajendra Vishwanath Arlekar ji. Sir, we are overwhelmed, we are overjoyed your presence and I'm sure that the words of wisdom which you are going to share with all of us will add lot of value in our path as a company secretary. Your distinguished leadership, deep commitment to public service and unwavering focus on inclusive development truly embody the ideals of participatory and ethical governance that our institute strives to promote. And I have an emotional connection with you because you were the governor of my home street Bihar, wherein my many political friends tell on, keep on telling that you have done excellent good work in the field of higher education. May I request you all, you all once again to put a big round of applause for the great work done by our, you know, Honorable Governor. On behalf of ICSI, on behalf of entire professional fraternity, I extend my heartfelt gratitude to you sir for taking out time from your busy schedule, for bearing it best and for blessing us with your gracious presence. Honorable Prime Minister Sri Narendra Modi has aptly stated that today, India is not just a nation of dreams but also a nation that delivers. That this vision of Viksit Bharat with which our theme has been also aligned, Progressive, Inclusive and Sustainable Bharat, it captures the transformative energy driving our nation forward. It reflects our collective resolve to shaping a Bharat where reforms are forward-looking, growth is inclusive and development is rooted in environmental responsibility. As our Honorable Prime Minister view is that, the development must be all-round, it must be for all and it must be all income passing. In our Purana, it has been said, tatrasru binduto, jata maharudraksha vrikchka, mambagya mahasena sarvesham hitkamya. That is, the Rudraksha appeared as a teardrop from Lord Shiva's eye for the welfare of all, for the benefit of all. Shiva belongs to everyone, his teardrop is a symbol of affection and love for human beings. Similarly, this National Convention of Company Secretaries will also become a medium to connect all our members, students and professionals through mutual knowledge sharing and valuable ideas for sustainable development of the country. The dream of a progressive, inclusive and sustainable Bharat is not just a government agenda, it's a collective mission. As responsible citizens and professionals and change-makers, we must embody the spirit of sabka saath, sabka vikas, sabka visvas and sabka prayas. Friends, India has implemented structural changes in recent times that has simplified compliances, enhanced transparency and accelerated ease of doing business, landmark initiative like the new income tax act, GST reforms, reforms under the IBC, Companies Act, SEBI laws, Labour laws, Mediation Act, setting of I F S C A, Digital Personal Data Protection Act and Investor Protection reforms reflect a bold shift toward agile, future-ready governance. Focused government initiative like Start-up India, Scale India, Mudra Scheme, Enhanced Credit Guarantee Scheme, Innovative Credit Assessment Models are unlocking new opportunities and empowering MSMEs and startups to scale boldly and shape India's future. These reforms are aligned with India's ambition of financing a sustainable economy, one that supports green investments, renewable energy projects and inclusive growth. I urge all the company secretaries to embrace emerging trends and become strategic enablers of national progress. Your indispensable role is central to shaping a future that reflects that aspiration of a confident, capable and inclusive India. I have already mentioned many major initiative taken by Institute of Company Secretaries of India during year. I would like to briefly touch upon the international initiatives. I would like to briefly touch upon the international initiative which we have taken this year at the I C S I. This year, on third to fifth September twenty-five, we have organized one conference at Sydney, embracing innovation, enhancing good governance. Then from twenty-four to twenty-sixth of April twenty twenty-five, we organized our Middle East Conference in Dubai, wherein Mahamohim Ramnath Kovinji, who was former president of India, was the chief guest on the theme, Good Governance Empowering Capital Markets. This year only, from twentieth to twenty-seventh June, we organized another program at Sri Lanka, Evolution of Corporate Governance in the Digital Age. At the national front, we are constantly supporting the education of the daughters of our Martyrs three, regularly donating amount towards the education of Martyrs daughters in the national defensement. Aligning with the initiative of Government of India, the I C S I also provides free waiver concession scheme for Agni Weers, Indian Armed Forces, Para-Military Forces and the families of Martyrs wherein hundred percent free concession of full pay payable at the time of registration in C S Executive Program. We have organized our first national tax conference, understanding our role in the Income Tax Act at the Chennai in the very first week of January this year wherein when Nasiman Saab was the president. Then Institute organized a national program on Pancayat Governance, our commitment towards promoting the grassroots governance in April twenty-five to boost sustainability and strengthen grassroots governance. The Institute also hosted its first inaugural aspirationalist program, National Seminar on Startup F P Os and Agri Business on twentieth of, twelfth of September twenty-five, twenty twenty-five in Patna to focus on innovation, entrepreneurship and growth in the agri business sector. The Institute has also constituted M S A B in Startup Board and also launched M S M in Startup Helpline with the intent of creating a platform for resolving the issues and challenges being faced by these entities. We have also constituted E S G in Sustainability Board to strengthen initiative and Institute towards promoting E S G framework. Recently, we have organized one program with Indian Institute of Corporate Affairs North East Enclave twenty twenty-five on the theme Ideation to Incorporation held in, held on eleventh to twelfth of July twenty twenty-five in Betsi Long, along with Ministry of Corporate Affairs. Recently, we have also entered into with one of the M O U with Dalhi Technological University for E S G research. We are also in the process of entering the M O U, another M O U with I R T Patna. Then we are equally committed for I S C International Alternative Dispute Resolution Center, providing a structured platform for arbitration, mediation and dispute resolution. I C S I has been constantly and regularly organizing I C S I Board Mentorship Program for strengthening the abilities of leading decision-makers across various boards of the corporate. The recently organized program was at Kalimpong, West Bengal and the fifth one is in Orphing at Jaishal Mer in Rajasthan from seventh to tenth of January. Recently, our I C S I Guiding Principles of Stewardship has been recognized by International Financial Service Center Authority. Trivediji is here, we thank you, sir, for recognizing our guiding principle on stewardship. May I request you all to give a big round of applause, Sri Praveen Trivediji, for his pivotal role in recognizing our stewardship code. I C S I launched the Governance and Compliance Standard on P O S H to help the corporates. The I F S C A jointly with I S C C A conducted outreach programs in Odha, Hyderabad, Chennai, which focused on opportunities available for company secretaries at Gift City and all would be happy to note that another outreach program is being organized here in our national convention. So far as inclusivity is concerned, I am happy to share with you, sir, that inclusivity is at the core of the I C S I. Out of more than two lakh, two and half lakh students registered for the C S course, about sixty percent are the female students, women. Further, women members constitute nearly fifty percent of the total seventy-eight thousand members and out of the twenty-nine H O Ds at the I C S I, many H O Ds are the female H O Ds. So that is the another strength inclusivity that the I C S I poses. The Institute is committed to enhancing the skills and capability of company secretaries. I have already mentioned that we have launched capacity building programs. I would like to conclude with the words of Nishal Mandela, what counts in life is not the mere fact that we have lived, it is what difference we have made to the lives of others. I extend my warmest welcome once again to the Chief Guest Sri Arlekarji, distinguished guests, speakers and delegates. Let us see this remarkable opportunity to forge meaningful connection, exchange transformative ideas and collaborate in shaping the India development journey. I have been given an honorist task by K S R Saab to narrate a story in Hindi. Sir, with your permission, I would like to narrate. In a jungle, fire was ignited. And no one could burn it. A girl was there who was watching the fire for a long time. She saw that a tree was a kilometer away. She was in the tree, she was filling her water in her feet and brought it to the fire in the jungle. A girl was standing a long distance from it and saw that the girl had done such things thousands of times. She went from the tree, filled her water in her feet and put it in the fire in the jungle. The girl did not leave it. A long time later, she asked. She said, "Moork, do you think that if you fill your feet in the jungle and put it in the fire, will the fire burn?" The girl responded calmly. She said, "My friend, I know that if I go far and bring water in my feet and put it in the fire, the fire will not burn." But if the fire is written in the fire, my name will be written in the fire and your name will be written in the fire quietly. As a, as a company secretary, we have to perform a phenomenal duty, a stellar performance in shaping the corporate governance framework of the country. At the same time, many times it will happen that some things will happen in our world that does not satisfy us, but the girl will give us a reward in that place. Once again, I welcome our honorable Chief Guest, each one of you. Jai Hind, Jai Bharat, Jai I C S I.
Thank you, sir, for your encouraging and inspiring words. Your thoughtful words have not only set the tone for today's proceedings but also reflected the spirit and purpose of this gathering with grace and clarity. To unhold our members, the Institute comes out with publications on various contemporary issues. In this context, there are few important releases. I would request the President and Vice President of I C S I to kindly felicitate the release at the hand of our Chief Guest, Honorable Governor of Kerala, Sri Rajendra Vishwanath Arlekar. Request other dignitaries on the dais to kindly join them. The first release is I C S I Principles on Climate Change Governance, I P C G. I C S I, in its continuous endeavor of promoting good corporate governance and environment sustainability, releases the I C S I Principles on Climate Change Governance, which aims to serve as a globally acceptable framework of responsible climate governance. We acknowledge the effort of the E S G Board of the Institute chaired by C S Ranjit Pandey, former president, I C S I and other members of the Board for making this a reality. By adopting this principle, entities can demonstrate corporate stewardship on climate governance and playing their part in global journey towards a sustainable future.
Thank you. Moving ahead, we have the release of Stakeholder Engagement Toolkit on E S G. Recognizing the importance of stakeholder engagement in E S G, the I C S I is pleased to announce the release of an all-encompassing Stakeholder Engagement Toolkit on E S G to guide corporates, stewards and other stakeholders in adopting effective, transparent and sustainable engagement practices to boost their governance architecture of E S G. We are grateful and we acknowledge the dedicated efforts of the E S G Board of the Institute chaired by C S Ranjit Pandey, former president, the I C S I and the members of the Board whose commitment and vision have played a crucial role in making the Stakeholder Engagement Toolkit on E S G from inspiration to implementation.
Thank you everyone for felicitating the release. We are now moving on to the award ceremony. You may please remain seated. Thank you. In order to encourage, motivate and boost quality performances at all the seventy-three chapters and four regional councils of the Institute across India, the Best Chapter Awards were instituted during the year nineteen eighty-four, eighty-five. And it was since nineteen ninety-nine that the Best Chapter Award was awarded in different categories as Diamond, Platinum, Gold and Silver Chapter. With this in background, we are now proceeding to the award ceremony for the Best Regional Council and the Best Chapter Award for the year twenty twenty-four. We will now begin with the first category. The first category of award is the Best Chapter Award in the Silver Grade. And the award goes to Salem Chapter of S A R C of I C S I. To receive the award, I request C S Purneema, Chairperson of Salem Chapter, request only those whose names are announced to kindly come over the dais to meet the protocol requirements. Thank you for the adherence. C S Purneema N, Chairperson, Salem Chapter of S A R C of I C S I for the year twenty twenty-four, kindly come up on the dais to receive the award. Also would request Mr. N Danabal, Office and Chart Salem Chapter of S A R C of I C S I to kindly come up on the dais. Requesting all the kind cooperation of the members, only those whose name are being called to kindly come up on the dais.
Salem Chapter of S A R C of I C S I receiving the Best Chapter Award in Silver Grade.
The award consists of a cheque of thirty thousand rupees and a commendation certificate. A huge round of applause to Salem Chapter of S A R C of I C S I.
Moving ahead, our next category is Best Chapter Award in Gold Grade. And the award goes to, and the award goes to Kochi Chapter of S I R C of I C S I. To receive the award, I request C S Nikhil George Pinto, Chairman Kochi Chapter of S I R C of I C S I for the year two thousand twenty-four. Would also request Miss Mitha Subin, Executive Officer, to be on the stage. Being President, a cheque of rupees forty thousand along with a commendation certificate. A huge round of applause, ladies and gentlemen. Kochi Chapter of I C S I receiving the Best Chapter Award in Gold Grade.
Next, we have the Best Chapter Award in Platinum Grade. And the award goes to... Any guesses? There we go, Hyderabad Chapter of S A R C of I C S I. To receive the award, I request C S Sri Laxmi Narayan and Gupta Ghamini, Chairperson of Hyderabad Chapter for the year twenty twenty-four to kindly come up on the dais. Also request Mr. V Sri Nivas, Executive Officer, to join C S Sri Laxmi. Huge round of applause to Hyderabad Chapter. Hyderabad Chapter is receiving a cash prize of fifty thousand along with a commendation certificate.
Thank you. Moving ahead, next we have the Best Chapter Award in Diamond Grade. The Best Chapter Award in the Diamond Grade. Any guesses? Bangalore Chapter of S A R C of I C S I, receiving the Best Chapter Award in Diamond Grade. Request C S Venkata Suprau Kalva, Chairman Bangalore Chapter of S A R C of I C S I for the year two thousand twenty-four to be on the stage. Miss Noor Nub Sumaya, Executive Officer, is also requested to be on the stage, please. They are receiving a cheque of rupees seventy-five thousand along with a commendation certificate. The Best Chapter Award in the Diamond Grade, Bangalore Chapter of S A R C of the I C S I. Thank you.
Now, the wait is over. Moving on to the much-awaited award declaration. National Best Regional Council Award. And the award goes to...
Western India Regional Council.
Request C S Mehul Ganesh Rajput, Chairman W I R C of S A R C for the year twenty twenty-four and also request Dr. Nikhat Khan, the then Regional Director of W I R C to come on the stage and collect the award. The award is a cash prize of one lakh rupees along with a commendation certificate and shield.
The National Best Regional Council Award.
The award is backed by Western India Regional Council. A huge round of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for graciously presenting the awards and honoring our winners with your presence. Congratulations to all the winners for your remarkable achievements. Your hard work and dedication truly deserve this recognition. And to those who did not make it this time, remember, every step that you take is a progress and every effort counts. Keep striving, keep believing, your moment of celebration is just around the corner.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the moment which we all were eagerly waiting for. We have with us today a leader whose vision has consistently driven meaningful change, a catalyst deeply respected for his unwavering commitment to his ideologies and his passionate advocacy for social justice, inclusive development and environmental conservation. A visionary who earned nationwide recognition for leading the transformation of the assembly into India's first paperless legislature, a groundbreaking move that not only embraced digital innovation but also underscored his dedication to sustainability. A leader who reminds us that true progress lies in balancing development with environmental stewardship. Ladies and gentlemen, please put your hands together for the Honorable Governor of Kerala, Sri Rajendra Vishwanath Arlekar as we present to you, sir. We request you to kindly enlighten our much-awaited audience. Thank you.
Namaskaram. This is what we say in Kerala. Today's program is of National Convention of Company Secretaries. You all have gathered here from different parts of our country and some of them are other parts, other parts of the other countries. I welcome, on behalf of the State of Kerala and on myself, being the Governor of the State. On this occasion, we have along with us on the stage, President of I C S I, Sri Dananjay Shuklaji, Vice President, Sri Pavan Chandakji, Secretary, Ashish Mohanji, Council Member Chenur, Dwarkanath Chenurji, all other dignitaries sitting in the audience. Priya Sahodari Sahodaran Maare, namaskaram. Sahodari Sahodaran Maare means brothers and sisters. In Kerala, we have such a tradition. Today's convention, that is fifty-third convention of the Company Secretaries. You must have noticed that I am the odd man on, on the dais as well as in the hall. I do not know what the company and what the secretaries are to the companies. But still you have invited me being the first citizen of the state and it is my privilege to be among with you and to say something over this. The company secretaries who have gathered from all the parts of our country, all of you are well experienced. You know what is to be done and why it is to be done. Many times, we know how of a thing, but we don't understand why of a thing. How it can be done, well, all of us are well-known to it and well-averse of it. But why it is to be done, that question is to be answered by all of us. I am as the company secretary, the guiding force of that particular unit or organization. Professionally, I have been put there. I know many things, what is to be done and what not to be done. But exactly what that organization, that particular... But exactly what that organization, that particular corporate requires, that has to be defined by us, by the Company Secretaries. As long as we are there on that seat, we are duty-bound to give all the fame and name and all the energy to that particular organization. And that is exactly what you have been doing. All, what you are gathered here is not that you want a lecture from me or a message from me or guidance. You all are well aware of it. You have been practicing, you are professionals. But many a times, I feel, all those people who are Company Secretaries or of that level or that category, those who are professionally well-equipped, what are they for, what does they mean to the common person? What do I mean to a common person who is walking on the streets? How does it differ or how does it refer to him? Does it make any difference to him? I think this particular aspect somewhere or sometime has to be addressed. It's good to be in a good company, knowledgeable people are here, and we have been just discussing the issues of Vikasit Bharat. What is that Vikasit Bharat mean to me and to that person who is walking on the streets? What does it mean? What does the difference it makes to him? Can we give some inputs? Can we give him some ideas, some innovations to that person telling a Vikasit Bharat means this to you? But before that, I must understand what does that mean? Many a times, what happens? I was just going through the brochure which has been just released. At the back of that brochure and probably that is your theme every time, it is written there, Satyamvada Dharmamchara. I don't know whether all of you are understanding the meaning of that. Satyamvada Dharmamchara means what? There is a story in Mahabharat. I just remembered that. Acharya Drona, who was the Guru of Pandava and Kaurav. Pandava and Kaurav, they used to, when they were young people, young students, they used to sit together, learn together, and Acharya Drona was giving them lessons. One day, I'm making it short, one day Acharya Drona gave them one lesson. And that lesson was Satyamvada Dharmamchara. And that lesson was, he asked the students, all those people sitting, sitting there, "Did you, did you understand?" He told the meaning of that. Satyamvada means always speak truth. Dharmamchara means always do righteous things. Hamesha satya bolna hai, joot nahi bolna. Aur dharm ka acharan karna. Dharm means not religion. Dharm is the things we do, do's and don'ts. These are, this is dharm. Dharm is not religion. To dharm ke mutavik humko chalna hai. Did you understand this? All of them said yes. To aaj chutti hai, to sab chutti par chale gaye. Dusre din a gaye, Acharya ji ne pucha, kya ho raha hai? Bataiye Satyamvada Dharmamchara. Everybody told ki kya hai, kaisa hai? Satyamvada ka matlab joot nahi bolna, hamesha khara khuraat, satya hi bolna hai. Dharmamchara ka matlab kya hai? Ki dharm ka acharan karna hai. But there was one student who could not answer this. Then Acharya asked him, "What is the matter?" He says, "Sir, I could not do." Thik hai. This, dusre din a gaye, fir pucha, to us ladke ko jawab dena hi nahi aata tha. Chhothe din a gaya, tisre din a gaya, chhothe din a gaya. He could not answer all those questions, all these questions, this very simple question, Satyamvada Dharmamchara. And on the fifth day, when he was there in the class, to Acharya ji ne pucha, "Batao beta, ho gaya kya?" "Haa, haa, ho gaya guruji, Acharya, ho gaya." "Kya hai, batao?" Satyamvada ka matlab hai ki hamesha satya bolna. Dharmamchara ka matlab hai, hamesha thik dhang se kam karna, vyavar karna. To Acharya ji ko bhi aashryar lag raha tha ki itne din kyu lag gaya beta? To unhone pucha, us vikti ne, us student ne, vidyarthe ne jo uttar diya hai, that has to be guiding force for us. Unhone bata diya ki guruji, uska arth to main samajh sakta tha ki satyamvada ka matlab hai ki hamesha thik, satya hi bolna hai. Aur dharmamchara ka matlab hai, hamesha dharm ka hi acharan karna hai, thik dhang se vyavar karna hai. To fir itne din kyu lag gaya? Acharya ji ne pucha. Main hamesha jab raat ko sota tha, tab main mera man mein vichar mere aate the ki kya pure din bhar maine saty ke vajah, asaty ka vachan ka upiyog kia? To mujhe laga tha ki maine asaty kia. Mainne gair vyavar kia. Dusre din, tisre din aur chaar dinon ke baad maine socha ki thik hai, aaj maine kuch bhi nahi kia hai. Mainne hamesha aaj pura din saty ka acharan kia hai, dharm ka acharan kia hai. What does that exactly mean? And the student's name was Yudhishthir, Dharmaraj, Yudhishthir. He was the student. Jivan bhar maine unhone dharm ka acharan kia. Now, Satyamvada Dharmamchara ka matlab kya hai? Arth kya hai? We have understood the letter of it. Did we understand the spirit behind that? Many a times, we understand letter. Many a times, we read the book and we understand, yes, I have read the book and we keep aside. Did I understand the spirit on the, of those letters? That is what we must understand. Vikasit Bharat ka agar hum spirit nahi samajh sakenge, to Vikasit Bharat aisa hi udghosh hi rehega. It will be just a slogan for all of us. And after few years, we will be boasting that see, our country is a Vikasit country, developed country. Vikasit Bharat me, jaise ki Shukla ji ek, ek kahani bataiye na unhone, us kahani ka jo arth hai, wahi hai ki Vikasit Bharat me mera kya yogdan rehega? What is my contribution? Vikasit Bharat will be there. But what I will be there? Who am I? Have I contributed towards it? Main aapko aur ek story batata hu aur mera bhaushan samapt karunga. Aisa hai ki mera ek mithra tha Mumbai me, o Maharashtra Times me tha. He was sub-editor there. Aur usne ek din mujhe, mithra ne bata diya ki nineteen forty-two me, jo apne desh, Bharat chhodon, andolan chal raha tha, us samay ki kahani uske pita ji usse bata rahe the. To pita ji ne bata diya ki beta, ki aisa sab ho raha tha, sab log raaste par aaye the, Bharat mata ki jai bol rahe the, koi Vandematriam bol raha tha, videshi wastoon ki holi ho rahe thi, kisi ne ghar chhoda, kisi ne sansaar chhoda, kisi ne shiksha chhodi, kisi ne nokri chhodi, kisi ne apna danda chhod diya. Everybody was on the streets to get, to attain the freedom for this country. Independence chahe tha in the year nineteen forty-two. Aur ye sab bata rahe the, mere mithra ke pita, pita ji, us mera mithra ko. To beech me, mere mithra ne apne pita ji ko roka aur kaha, beta, ab baat pita ji, marathi me usne pucha ki baba, ki ye to sab thik hai, ye sab ho raha tha, Vandematriam ho raha tha, pura vaataavaran aisa charstha, rastra bhakti ke prati, aur Bharat mata ki ho raha tha, Vandematriam ho raha tha, ye sab ho raha tha. Tab mere pita ji, mere, mere priya baba, aap bataiye, aap kaha the? Aap kaha the us samay? To mera mithra ke pita ji ne bata diya, beta, suno, ye sab jo ho raha tha na, tab main mere ghar ke khidki se sab kuch dek raha tha. Mera mithra ne kaha, baba, mujhe sharam aati hai. Aapne ye sab cheeze khidki se nahi dekni chahe thi. You should have been part of that whole agitation. You should have been there. Aane wale samay, hamare, agli PD ne, hamare bachon ne, humko ye prashna nahi puchna chahe. Humko nahi puchna chahe. Agar pucha to humare pas positive answer hona chahe. "Haa, beta, us samay jab Vikasit Bharat ka sapna pura ho raha tha, I was part of it. I was part of it. I contributed to it." Isab bolne ka adhikar mujhe hona chahe. That is how we can go inside. Chhoti chhoti baate ho sakhti hai, wo hum sabko karne ke aavashakta hai. Main Goa me, jaise bata diya ki Goa me tha, Goa me, us samay Bharti Janta Party ka kam kar raha tha. Aur Pramod Mahajan, jinka naam aap sabne suna hoga, Pramod ji waha Goa me aate the, hamare prabharhi the. Aur Pramod ji jab aate the, to hum jaise baiht ke hoti the, kuch kuch hota rata tha. Once upon, once a day, Pramod ji was sitting with us and we were just discussing many issues. Pramod ji ne humko ek kisaa bata diya. Kisaa kya tha? Pramod ji batane lege ki main New York me gaya tha. New York me, waha main, mere dost ke saath coffee house me gaya. Coffee house me jaakar, coffee pe li. Aur coffee pene ke baad nikalti samay, maine mere jeep se Bharat ki currency jo hai rupee, uske ek hazaar, us samay ek hazaar rupee ka note tha, to ek hazaar rupee ka note maine de diya aur usko maine payment karne laga. O jo waiter tha, vo cash counter par jo baihta tha, usne kaha, "Sorry, sir, we don't accept rupees. Please pay in dollars." Pramod ji batane lege, "Kya aisa hota hai? Jo mera rupee hai, Bharat me iski itni badi upar niche hota hai, iska itni badi qimat hai aur America me iski qimati hi nahi hai. They don't accept my rupee here. And my rupee is being well-treated in India. To mera pure, mera desh chhod ke bahar, iski qimat nahi hai." Pramod ji kene lege ki mujhe us din ki pratiksha hai, I am waiting for that day. When I will go back to New York, I will go to that coffee house, I will order coffee and I will drink coffee. And after drinking coffee, after having coffee, I will pay the cheque of the bearer, the same amount which I should have paid and that will be in rupees and he will accept it. That is the day, that is the what I want. Vikasit Bharat ki kalpana ye hai. Hamari ekonomi stable honi chahe. Hamari ekonomi kitne trillion dollar ki hogne chahe, vo hum tay karenge. But how do I contribute to it? That is what I am supposed to do. That is what I am supposed to learn. That is what I am supposed to do in next two days in deliberations. Aapke sabke deliberations hoti rahegi, charcha, vimarsh hota rehega. Kya kya karte raheenge aap sabhi? Aur is par aapke professional ethics kya hoti hai, kaisa karna hai? Ki I, I am not aware of it. Lekin aap sab karenge. Is par aap documents bhi tayar karenge. Aur sab logon ko baatenge, bataenge, this is what we have to do. But ultimately, after few years, by the year twenty forty-seven, Bharat, Vikasit Bharat banne wala hai, iske liye mera kya yogdan rehega? Ye humko tay karna hai and that is not tomorrow, that has to be today. Aaj karna hai. Badh me samay chala jayega. I have to do it. Is disha me humko vichar karne ke aavashakta hai, aisa mujhe laga hai behno aur bhaiyo. We all have gathered here and we want to think on positive lines. That thinking is positive lines will certainly benefit, contribute towards Vikasit Bharat. Aur Vikasit Bharat karne ke liye hum sabko ye sab karne ke aavashakta hai. Hamari ekonomi kya hogi, kaisi hogi, kya hogi, vagar. If I am not, if I am reluctant to buy my products, then my country will not be economically stable. I have to purchase my product, the products which are made in India. Aatmanirbharta ka ye, yahi arth hota hai. And you all people here sitting are, issse aur koi jada iska duth ho sakta hai. Aap to isko bahut hi achhe dhang se sab logon ke samne rakh sakte hai. Sabke samne vichar kar sakte hai. And people will listen to you, not me. You, you, because you are professionally equipped, well-equipped. People will understand you and that is the reason why this onus comes automatically on us. Ye responsibility, hamari apni ban jati hai, kisi ne bataaya, nahi bataaya, chhod dijiye usko. But this particular thing is of mine. I have taken the responsibility. The message from Kochi is this, yes, I am the part and parcel of Vikasit Bharat, whole vision. That is the message that we are taking here. Aap sabko puna ek bar dhanyavat deta hu. Aur mera thoda sa lamba hua, probably irrelevant ho sakta hai. Aisa bhaushan, main aap sabke samne samapt kartaa hu. Nannii, dhanyavat.
Thank you, sir, for narrating those beautiful stories and inspiring us. It was totally relevant. Our hearts are full of gratitude and our minds are enriched by the profound insights shared by you. May I now invite CS Ashish Mohan, Secretary ICSI, to propose a vote of thanks.
Good evening all. Chief guest, Honorable Governor of Kerala, Sri Rajendra Vishwanath Arlekarji, President ICSI, Vice President ICSI, Program Director, the Council Members, respected guest. It is indeed a moment of immense honor and pride for all of us at the Institute of Company Secretaries of India to have been graced today by the great presence of the Honorable Governor of Kerala, Sri Rajendra Vishwanath Arlekarji. Sir, your inspiring address has stirred in each of us as a deeper sense of responsibility to contribute meaningfully towards the nation's journey of a progressive, inclusive and sustainable Bharat, which is also theme of our convention. On behalf of the Council of ICSI and the entire fraternity, I express my deepest gratitude to you, sir, for sparing your valuable time to bless this national convention with your presence. We are truly privileged to have you amongst us. Thank you once again for your encouragement, your wisdom and your presence. Thank you, sir, very much. And all the guests wish you all a wonderful, joyful evening ahead. Thank you all of you.
Ladies and gentlemen, request you to kindly rise for the National Anthem.
Janagan manadhi nayak jahre Bharat bhagavatata. Panjana, sindhu, Gujarat, Maratha, daavil, uttal, danga. Bhimla, himachal, yavuna, danga, utsal, jaladhi, talanga. Tavashubh naame, jaade, tavashubh aasish, maange, gaade, tav jaya, gata. Janagan mankal, daayat, jahre, Bharat bhagavatata. Jahre, 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 jahre.
Would request the audience to be in the auditorium itself. You requested not to go outside the convention hall. Please continue sitting.
Request all the delegates to kindly adhere to the protocol and remain seated.
We repeat, request the audience to please continue on their seats.
Ladies and gentlemen, something extraordinary is about to happen. A moment that fills the air with pride and brings us all together. A wave of unity, a boost of energy, something that speaks louder than words. A wave of unity, a burst of energy, something that speaks louder than words.